Okay, Mayor, we are now live on Facebook and on Zoom for the March 23rd, 2021 legislative session of the Town Council.
Great, thank you. Excellent, thank you, Jim. Good evening, everybody. Adequate notice of this meeting, as required by the Open Public Meetings Act, was provided through the posting, mailing, and filing of the annual notice of regularly scheduled meetings of the Town Council on December 11, 2020. The notice was on that date posted on the bulletin board of the municipal building, provided to the Westfield leader in the Star Ledger, and filed with the clerk of the town of Westfield. Mrs. Rowley, may I have a roll call?
Mayor Rendell?
Here.
Councilmembers Havegood?
Here.
Parmally?
Here.
Agrippa?
Here.
Katz?
Here.
Mackey?
Yeah.
Contract?
Here.
Dardia?
Here.
And Boys?
Here.
Can you all please join me for a salute to the flag? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. All right, Jim, we'll start with you.
Sure, I just have, I'll be doing a lot of talking tonight, Mayor, so I have a very quick update right now. I just wanted to mention one thing that I thought is important. We're opening up our Conservation Center a week early. It opens up this Thursday. And we've already sold, as of today, over 230 permits, all online. So it's a second year of online registration, which is working out very well. So, center opens up on Thursday for the season, which is, again, a week earlier than normal. And, again, permits sold online. A couple of things to remember. Because we're selling permits online, you have to come for your first visit and get your permit. So we're gonna have the same thing we had last year. We opened up, we're gonna have multiple lines to get in, we're gonna have extra people there to process everybody as quick as possible, which worked out very well last year. And you'll be able to come back in. If you get your permit the first day, you'll be able to come back in and use recycling and/or use the organic debris on a different lane that is already set up. So, but again, we have a lot of new recycling opportunities there that we didn't have at this time last year. We have, we've had now, you know, for a few weeks, but the number five recycling bin, we have books recycling, which is a new thing we started. Since last year, we added wine corks and tennis balls. We still have the normal staples of styrofoam and scrap metal and plastics and glass. One note that's interesting, styrofoam, you know, the Public Risk Committee is gonna be reviewing a year-end report at the next meeting next week. I just had an issue, no Chris McMonahan, I got word from the county. So the county as a whole, I believe, collected 36,000, was it, tons, Chris?
Thirty-six thousand pounds.
Pounds, okay, good, pounds, of styrofoam. Eighteen thousand of that came from Westfield.
Wow.
So just our Conservation Center, to give you a sense of the volume that is being collected at our center. And thanks to Richie Eubanks and his crew who are taking it and getting rid of it, and the appropriate place after it's collected there. So, it's, again, people want to do the right thing. We're having big recycling opportunities at the center, which is wonderful. So, again, the center opens up Thursday for the season, online permits, through all information on the website. And, again, we're looking for another great season, and we'll talk more about it in the budget, but the Conservation Center was one of our bright spots last year, was people really wanted to get out and do things in their home, they wanted to use our center, they wanted to recycle, and it was a really good revenue bright spot for us, and a getting out of the house bright spot for all of us. So, it was a really good thing. We're excited about that. I want to thank Chris and Greg O'Neil and Richie Eubanks particularly, and the staff of the Conservation Center for getting up and running for this week and a week earlier than normal. So, thank you, Mayor.
Excellent, thank you, Jim. And just a few updates for me before we get to the real meat of the meeting, when the budget presentation. So, good evening, everybody. Just remind everybody that we'll be taking separate Q and A after the budget presentation, and then after that, it will be public comment, as it always has been, and will only be accepted via Zoom. So anybody that wants to ask questions, see, join us via the Zoom link. And obviously, you can watch it on Facebook via live streaming as well. Just a little update on COVID. Unfortunately, numbers in New Jersey are certainly not going in the right direction. Governor Murphy announced yesterday, reported that there likely won't be any additional announcements in the near future about loosening restrictions due to the recent increase in COVID numbers. New Jersey is unfortunately leading the nation in new cases per capita. The seven-day average for confirmed COVID-19 cases in New Jersey is up 11% from a week ago, and up 29% from a month ago. I know that they are detecting a lot of the new variants, which is a big reason for that. It is that right now, we're at the highest level since February 5th. The rate of transmission is 1.09. On the brighter side, the vaccinations upfront, New Jersey has administered 3.56 million doses of the vaccine, including now there's 1.26 million people who are considered fully vaccinated with both shots. You know, you can always find detailed numbers on the New Jersey COVID-19 dashboard. We're getting so close to the end of this, we hope, but let's just, you know, you don't want anybody to get sick when we can see the end in sight. So please continue to do what we all know we need to do, as much as, you know, we're probably sick of it. It really, it's for the safety of everybody. And please, if you're eligible, get vaccinated. And if you've got any issues or questions, you can join us on April 1st. At 11 o'clock, there's a Zoom discussion entitled "COVID Vaccine Fact or Fiction?" It will be held for seniors and other vulnerable members of the community looking to obtain more information. The panel of experts includes Dr. Larry Butnick, who's our president of the Westfield Board of Health, Megan Avalone, who's our regional health director, our vulnerable populations coordinator for the Board of Health, and Dr. Pamela Brookes, who's a Westfield resident and vice president of the New Jersey Black Women Physicians Association. So you can just email westfieldnjseniors@gmail.com to get the Zoom information. But if you know anybody that has concerns about the vaccine, please encourage them to participate in this. There's a very, you know, obviously important that we get everybody vaccinated as quickly as possible. So, there is some onsite viewing, but there's gonna be limited viewing for that, so you'd have to register in advance. So, I want to thank the Board of Health, Lifelong Westfield, Westfield Community Center, Neighborhood Council, and the MLK Junior Association of Westfield for putting this all together and making this event possible. And just on another front, I hope you had a chance to see the glow seesaws while they were in town. I don't think anybody, we knew they'd be a hit, but I don't think we had any idea to the extent that they would be so popular. It was, I want to thank the DWC for bringing joy to people of all ages. And I think that was so great, what was so great about this event. It was great for kids and adults alike, but most importantly, our downtown businesses is probably one of the most successful events they've had to drive foot traffic in years. Many of them record, I heard one guy said it was his best day in 15 years. So, it's been incredible, the promotion and marketing of that with the chocolate tour and everything else was incredible. And it was a real team effort with the DPW installing them, and, you know, the fire, fire and police kind of keeping eye on them. And I really do want to recognize the DWC Promotions Chair, Resident Erin Ben-Hayon. She suggested this brilliant exhibit, and then a lot of people brought it to life. So thanks to Bob Zuckerman and to Dawn Mackey. It was a great proof of concept that if you build it, they will come. And I think, you know, it became a big destination. And the great news is, a lot of people were from out of town, which meant they came and they spent time, they bought lunch, they had shops, and so we're really looking forward to the exciting plans that the DWC has and will be unveiling soon for the summer, spring, and summer, which is gonna be great. I was proud to join hundreds of concerned neighbors along with Councilwoman Linda Havegood. On Sunday in Cranford, we attended the Stop Asian Hate Rally to show support for Asian-American and Pacific Islander brothers, sisters, friends, and neighbors. It was great, they had a great turnout, and everybody standing in solidarity with the AAPI community to publicly denounce any and all forms of bigotry, hate, and prejudice. We, Linda and I were joined along with members of the Westfield Area Chinese American Association, an organization that has devoted countless hours of volunteer service to Westfield. They, we have connected them with our Human Relations Advisory Commission, and they are working on a, planning a peaceful protest in Westfield this Saturday at 1 o'clock at Mindewaskin Park. So I would encourage you to come and join them in solidarity. And I just want to reiterate that the AAPI community has the unwavering support of this council and this administration. And I want to be clear that there is a zero tolerance for any types of hate and bigotry in our community. I'm very grateful to the WACAA and the HRAC for their ongoing work to keep the lines of communication open about the Harmonies Act. Chief Adalora has been fantastic, is weighing in in terms of the role of the Police Department, the prosecution of anything, any criminal acts that they can determine as bias crimes. And we definitely are gonna continue and obviously work hard towards becoming a more inclusive community. So, with that, I think it's time to come and move on to the agenda tonight, which we know is a big night for us, which includes the introduction of the 2021 municipal budget. I want to thank Town Administrator Jim Gildea and CFO Scott Olson, who worked diligently over the last few months with each town department to minimize our costs as much as possible without sacrificing services to residents. My special thanks also goes out to each department head, I'm sure Linda will talk about it more later, who worked diligently to identify cost savings where they could, and also demonstrated significant resourcefulness and nimbleness in light of these unprecedented times. I do want to thank the Finance Policy Committee, and in particular, Councilman Linda Havegood, who serves as the committee chair, and whose experience as a finance senior executive in the private sector has provided measurable value to this process. I always say, Linda, it's an incredible gift to this town. So thank you, Linda. And also Vice Chair Councilman Mark Parmally, Councilman Diva Contract, and Councilman Jim Boyes. They put in many hours of nights and weekends to produce a budget that reflects the substantial challenges of 2020 and the many exciting opportunities for 2021 and beyond. So you will see, and I'll show you in detail, we are very fortunate to be in a strong financial position this year in light of the revenue impact experienced by us and many municipalities as a result of the pandemic. I am grateful that we expect to receive 2.9 million in American Rescue Plan funds over the next few years, and it's given us the confidence and additional flexibility to move forward on town priorities for this year, while also well-positioning us in 2022 and beyond to be able to implement some of the transformational initiatives that we've been working towards over the past two years. So we're also introducing the capital budget earlier than usual in order to get projects started, completed sooner, which I think Jim and Linda was gonna talk about some exciting details on road paving and more. So, with that, we'll get to work. Once again, we'll be enforcing Robert's rules just to ensure we stay on topic and the meeting runs efficiently. But I think from here, we're moving on to the budget presentation, so I'm gonna hand it off to you, Jim.
Sure, thank you, Mayor. So let me share my screen for the PowerPoint presentation. Keep this going here. Okay, well, I'll, again, thank you, Mayor, and thank you, everybody. This is the annual budget presentation. We're doing it on time this year, unlike last year, where we had to delay it because of the pandemic. So, very happy that we're on time. So I'll be turning it over to the Chairwoman and Councilman Havegood to start off, and we can go from there.
All right, great. Thank you, Jim. I think we can move to the first official slide. Thank you so much. This is, you know, a very, very nice overview of all of the people who came together to help put this budget in front of the public tonight. We actually talked about it earlier this evening in conference session. And we'll be doing a fuller presentation for everyone right now. As the mayor mentioned, the yeoman's work for this budget always happens with our Town Administrator and our CFO, Jim Goode and Scott Olson. They start this process and end this process, you know, and in between, the rest of the people who appear on this slide have a chance to, you know, participate and, and, you know, provide opinions and insights and advice. We're very, very excited about the budget that we're going to be presenting with you, to you tonight. So, on behalf of the Finance Policy Committee of Councilmen Parmally, Contract, and Boys, I, you know, I thank all of the department heads for all of the hard work that they did to try to, you know, really sharpen their pencils this year and, you know, try to find cost savings wherever possible. There's a couple of other people here that we should really recognize. Our Bond Counsel, Rogan McCarthy, and Supplee Clooney, our auditors, both of whom are really invaluable advisors to us in this whole process, particularly as we've been, you know, seeing some very unusual times over the last year that are continuing. And then I also wanted to make a note about the Investment Advisory Council that we started a few years ago, that is all resident volunteers, a couple of high school volunteers, as well as a number of finance, you know, professionals. They're all busy at work, helping us to think about new ways that we can make the budget even better next year already. So, thank you to all of them. For those of you who participated in the process, the kickoff to this process at the end of January, where we do our look back on how the budget, how we did against our budget on the 28th of January, this will look a little familiar, but it's worth repeating because it does give you, you know, a very good sense of all of the people and all of the meetings and all the time that goes into putting a very, you know, strong budget together that reflects the needs of the town, the opinions of the residents, and helps us plan for the future. And that's something that I really did want to call out on this particular slide, the capital planning process that we went through at the end of last year going into this year, that will, you know, help, that's helping us to keep our road paving on track, and also to, you know, keep introducing new infrastructure improvements, so that, so what we've done now is look out very specifically over the next three years to identify, you know, all of the capital budget items that we want to accomplish this year, next year, and the year after. So we'll be learning a little bit more about that as we get further into the presentation tonight. After tonight, we, we will take comments, you know, from the public. The, on April 20th, that is the public hearing in which we intend to adopt the budget. So this is always a very important slide to start with, as we get into the overview of the municipal budget. So the municipal budget is that, only that purple pie piece representing just a little bit over 16% of the overall taxes that the town collects. So when you pay your taxes every quarter, the amount that you're paying, only 16% of those actually go to support the budget that we're talking about tonight, which is important to, for all of us to remember. The, the school budget, as you can see, is really the lion's share of, you know, the, of the taxes, you know, that we pay in Westfield. The, so, $106 million compared to our, you know, 28 and a half. And then you'll see the other portions, the library, which, you know, has a mandated budget, Union County, and then the Union County open space levy tax.
And just one thing to mention, Linda, if I could, it's important to note, again, you know, the county budget, I believe, is like last year, they're projecting a 0% tax increase. And again, they're a larger piece of the pie than we are. So when it all comes together, that is helpful for the residents, what comes out of the pocket. You know, when the school and the county have, you know, lower tax increases, it's, helps the overall puzzle. We're such a small piece of the puzzle at our 16%. So again, good news for '22, like in '21, we're using more of their surplus, and they're gonna present, from what I understand, a 0% tax increase for the second year in a row. That's helpful for everyone's bottom line.
Westfield's leading by example, putting our surplus to good use. So, we can thank Union County for, you know, helping us to keep our overall tax increase low this year. So as we go through the rest of this presentation, Jim and I will kind of tag-team on different things, but I think we wanted to start out by, you know, just reminding the public about the fact that, you know, unfortunately, as the mayor just reminded us, COVID-19 continues. And so as we're, you know, the highest infection rate in the country in New Jersey right now, obviously, there are still going to continue to be impacts on, you know, revenue streams that the municipality relies on. Last year, we, we had losses against our budget in the court revenues and in parking. We're hoping that, you know, we'll do better this year, but we anticipated less, just in case. But those things will continue, and we took all of that into account when we were putting this budget together, because, you know, we still don't know when the end of this is going to come. The good news is that, based on the American Rescue Plan, we do know for sure that $2.9 million will be received by the town. Those monies aren't included in this budget as a revenue number because we don't have them yet, and we can't do that until, we wouldn't be able to do that unless we actually, you know, had those monies in hand. But what we do know is that $1.45 million of that 2.9 or half will be received by us very shortly in 2021, and the remainder will be received next year. So we'll be, that will be a nice guaranteed replenishment of surplus when it's, when it comes in. The other, you know, good news is that, vis a vis, a lot of other towns in New Jersey, our fiscal profile continues to look very strong. We have maintained our AAA bond rating, and the surplus that we have very, very carefully managed over the last four years has helped us to get through probably one of the most difficult times that, you know, any of us in our lives have experienced. So as we look at the situation of the impact from COVID-19, the, the most significant ones that we had to deal with in the budget this year came from lower revenues received than even our adjusted 2020 budget. So, we had parking and court revenues decline. And based on that, municipal finance rules don't allow us to anticipate revenue higher than what we collected last year. So, we had some interesting challenges for this year to figure out how we would make up for those differences. We'd had some bright spots in revenue that we didn't expect through the Conservation Center and through building permits. And the other thing that we really need to thank everyone in the town of Westfield for is your very careful payment of your taxes on time. So thank you. Our collection rates continue to be quite good. Yeah, Jim, go ahead and jump into this.
Just, again, as Linda said, we did have some bright spots in 2020, but one thing I wanted to mention is back to what you said before, which is important for the public to understand. Yes, municipal financing laws are such that you're not really able to anticipate more than you collected the year before. There are things you can do, and the pandemic obviously provided some opportunities, but we didn't want to take advantage of those because it just creates further expenses in the future. And luckily, we were able to cut expenses to not have to do that, which is important. So, again, speaking of reducing spending, so again, we do have very well-managed salary and wages with, you know, five union contracts and coming at less than 2%, which is tough to do in any normal year. So that's very helpful. Operating expenditures, we're cutting almost every department. We'll see some details of that in the upcoming slides. And the places that it couldn't be cut, there's obviously rationale for that. Debt services down 2.52%, that was strategically decided because we want to set ourselves up for not only continuing our capital plan, but for setting ourselves up for bigger projects as we go forward in future years. Health insurance costs, we had a very good year this year. We had good experience. And so our health insurance costs were down by 6%, which is significant. That helped us really manage our statutory required expenses, which is always a big number. And again, always looking for shared services. So, while, while cutting those expenses, we still had $70,000 handed to us in nondiscretionary expenses. So we had to deal with that, and we're still able, again, as Linda mentioned, the mayor mentioned, thanks to all the department heads, it's, you know, I talk to them every day, and, you know, I sound like a broken record, but they always deliver. We need to obviously do more with less, we need to try to cut where we can and not, I'm trying to not affect services as best we can, and they're always very resourceful with that. As Linda mentioned as well, so appropriations are up, actually, it's 1.14%, not 1.17%, but despite the $70,000 increase in nondiscretionary expenses, again, we were able to cut where we could, but again, revenue down, second year in a row. 270 plus last year's 1.2, that's, that's very difficult to overcome. We are projecting a little extra money in our sale of assets account, and the reason we can do that, again, we have great confidence we're gonna replenish. We do have some property sales that are pending in 2021. We had some other sales we had last year to replenish some of our use last year, so we're able to use that with confidence, knowing we can replenish it and use it again if we have to in the future year. And again, all that being said, 1.98% tax levy, or sorry, tax rate being passed on to the, to the residents, which is $66 per year for municipal portion or municipal purposes, which comes out to roughly a little over $5 a month, which is less than the rate of inflation for town services, which is great news. And then lastly, the surplus, again, looking to, to conserve surplus, so we did replenish the, the number back up to 9.6 to start of the year. So it was close to the $10 million target we tried to shoot for. 2021 budget will use just about 3.8 million, and which is actually another $710,000 less than last year. So we had the luxury, even in a difficult year, to use surplus but use less to conserve for future years. And then, as the mayor mentioned before, and Linda mentioned, we are very fortunate to be able to receive this federal stimulus. So now we have some confidence that not only will what we normally generate be added, but we'll have extra money that we're guaranteed to be added to our surplus and future revenue opportunities. So, $5.8 million left in the bank untouched, plus the 1.4 we'll receive this year, plus whatever we generate, which has, this past couple of years has been about $2 million. So we're very, very confident we're gonna finish out and start 2022 in a very good spot. Anything else, Linda, on that slide?
No, I, I would just add, Jim, that, you know, there's ongoing work to look at opportunities for shared services that in the future will enable us to bring costs down. We're looking at inside of the courts and in some other things related to the DPW. So, and, you know, even in the middle of the pandemic, we're doing a lot of planning, as I mentioned, around the capital budget to continue to, you know, set ourselves up for a diversification of revenues in the future. You know, through the redevelopment efforts and those kinds of things that will bring new revenue streams in over time and reduce the tax burden on the residents.
Good, thank you. So a quick, a quick grab or chart here, just again, this is the tax rates for, you know, since 2012. So, again, you know, this is where we are in 2021. But again, under 2% for many, many years, which is great for the residents. On a small piece of the budget, of course, we've had, obviously, the big decreases here, '18, '19, these are the two pandemic years. So even in the pandemic, we can be under 2% tax levy or tax rate, which is important.
Yeah, and sometimes, and, and I think it's also important to say that, you know, you need to look at these things, you know, sometimes over, you know, a period of time, because as I, if, if anyone read the letter that I read, that I wrote to the leader, you know, emphasizing the fact that the budget is a new puzzle every year. There, you know, are new things that come to us in nondiscretionary costs and, you know, just new circumstances that present themselves. So, you know, you, we have to use all the tools in the toolkit to, you know, figure out how, you know, we solve for the, you know, results that we want and need. But I think it, I, I'm certainly, you know, quite proud of the fact that if you take the average over the last four years, we've only increased taxes by 1.1%. And, you know, the four years before that, the taxes increased by 2%. So we're, you know, working hard to make sure that, you know, we're So we're, you know, working hard, um, to make sure that, um, you know, we're looking at cost savings where we can and, that we, you know, are utilizing, you know, surplus in, you know, a proper way while maintaining a, um, good nest egg to help us, um, in, in times when we need it.
Another, uh, you know, slide about surplus, um, uh, some of the historical uses, the numbers. And again, again, here is where we are in twenty twenty one. Uh, so, uh, using three point seven nine five, keeping a nest egg at five point eight, obviously, uh, as we talked about already, and we'll see what we generate. But you can see, what we generated even in a year of pandemic, two point five million, uh, the year before that, two million, year before that, four point two. So again, every year, as Linda said, every year is different. Things are handed to you and things change. But, uh, based upon the last two years, even the year of pandemic, we, we had a, a rather good natural generation of surplus. Never mind the stimulus money we're going to receive. And again, you know, you, um, uh, you know, you really look at the number that you start the year with. That's what, when we meet with the owners every year, we're looking to see where we start with. You know, yes, we have a bank where the budget's introduced here and adopted, but of course there's money that we generate. And then that generates a new number for the beginning balance. So, uh, uh, you know, so there's another, let's go to the next slide as I think it's important. Uh, this is under a slide on surplus, give some context. We used this slide at our January twenty eighth meeting. When we had the public meeting for the public to have input. And again, this is just a comparison. You know, these, these were obviously very difficult years, uh, during the Great Recession. Uh, and you can see obviously it's lower numbers, but, big percentages of surplus needed to be used to get through those years to avoid layoffs, to provide and again, maintain services as best as possible. Uh, and the generation was obviously not there. Fast forward eighteen, nineteen, twenty, twenty one, twenty twenty one, the pandemic years. Good news is we really haven't had to use any more than, uh, thirty nine percent of the available budget each year. Uh, even in a pandemic, which is rather remarkable, which is kind of why we're, you know, you see budget or surplus use is reducing, each year, uh, where we can. So we can conserve it, uh, and, uh, again, generating, uh, money back every year, even in a pandemic. So, uh, we feel very strongly then again, surplus is being used in the rainy day as it should be. That's what it's there for. But also, uh, we're able to replenish, uh, surplus use every year. So it's a little comparison, but I think the percentages were interesting thought. Less than forty percent, of course, a lot of it, there was not much choice back then. Uh, but it gives you some comparison at least. Any other thoughts there, Linda?
Nope, I think you covered it. Thank you.
So this slide is about, um, again, revenue.
Details.
Yeah, details. All right, but let's open up some of the, some of the big points here. This is just something to show the public, uh, about revenue losses. So again, two thousand nineteen, this column here, this is our last, what we'll call a normal budget year before the pandemic hit. Uh, and you can see, you know, things like, you know, a normal year for the court, you know, four sixty two. Normal year for parking, close to one point seven million. Um, normal year for the building department, one point one million. You know, give you a sense of those things. Then you, you know, two thousand twenty, luckily the pandemic of all things hit early in the year. So we had an opportunity to make changes to the budget. Otherwise, if it had hit later, our budget would have been set. So that was very important for us. So we automatically made some assumptions. Remember at the time, one year ago, everyone kind of thought the pandemic would be over by the summer. Uh, and so we made some assumptions about reductions in, 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 uh, revenue, uh, for a number of months period and hoping it would come back. So we did make some reductions, but even then, so we anticipated three hundred thirty eight in court, only collected two twenty four. Anticipated a reduction in parking, came close, but not, not all the way there. And again, as Linda mentioned before, then you have to focus on, okay, what are we really going to take in in twenty one, court and parking? And you get a chance to see now the variant versus two thousand nineteen. So the anticipated amount for twenty one versus what we normally would have collected in nineteen. So parking a quarter, big losses, uh, even though we're gonna, we again assume and we, we project that we should do at least the number here. Uh, and maybe better because things will get better. Vaccinations are on the rise. Things are getting better, um, despite our little setback in the past week or two. But even if we do better, we're still behind where we were in, in two thousand nineteen. So we have a long way to go. And so that's why the federal stimulus is helpful to replenish some of the lost revenue and surplus use. Uh, other categories, uh, again, back to the building department, that was one of our bright spots. So we normally collect one, one, one million, one, we reduce it to eight hundred thousand, not knowing what we'd had. We actually exceeded our expectation in twenty. To above the hundred thousand, but we're still being conservative. We want to make sure we think we're very confident now. We're going to collect that, but we want to make sure we're going to over, to let our over anticipate. Because then you don't create this excess opportunity, which helps us to anticipate more for the following year. So that's one example. Another example here, fees and permits, another bright spot for us. We did five ninety three in twenty nineteen. Some of that was, we thought, one-time revenue sources. We only just made four forty. There were some ordinance changes, some fee changes, conservation center permit increases, et cetera. Road opening permits for utility work and wow, we had a very good year. So some of those things really helped us. Again, we're not doing the full amount, trying to cut back a little bit, but we think we just have some opportunity to access there. So you can see though, overall losses, um, in revenue in these categories is not insignificant. Uh, and, uh, we have to make sure that we're managing that going forward. And, um, and again, sewer fee here, we did increase the fee because we had a big increase the past couple of years. We did not increase the fee in twenty twenty one because our increase is very small. We'll see that. That's where the only major revenue increase we had in all these categories for twenty, uh, twenty twenty and twenty twenty one. So, um, again, revenue losses are the story and to have two years in a row where you're losing revenue is something a lot of towns really can't handle. So, uh, important. Again, big picture budget wise, um, this is just, uh, the, the overall comparison of budget years nineteen, twenty and twenty one. Uh, and the increase decrease here is twenty one versus twenty. But again, uh, I think some things to note, our total budget in twenty nineteen was forty six million seven. Both twenty twenty and twenty twenty one's budget are below that. Um, so that's, those are important factors. We also, so you establish a budget of an amount, this year is forty six, six twenty five. You then have to have the matching, uh, you know, revenues. So that's made up of our revenues that we can, and we can control to a certain extent. And then the tax levy. So, um, again, revenues were down by six percent in twenty twenty. Revenues are again down by one point six percent in twenty one. So the levy has to go up. But because of the ratable increase, we'll see that in a little bit, but the ratable increase, we had a big increase thanks to our new tax assessor. His work on catching up with ratables and having property values increase and even during a pandemic. The divisor that we use for the budget is a higher divisor. The ratables are up. So that helps us produce a one point nine eight percent tax rate to the resident. Last year was one nine five. And of course, my little, uh, menu here is blocking it, but it was a zero percent tax increase in two thousand nineteen. Uh, and again, two thousand nineteen, you see revenues are up six percent. So again, uh, when you have revenues going up, you have a lot more flexibility, which we haven't had in twenty or twenty one.
And, and Jim, before we go to the next slide, I think it, it is worth mentioning that, um, you know, what, so people look at this and, there's a, you know, a lot of big numbers and it's hard to see how, you know, it relates back to each of us as individuals. But, um, the average, um, uh, assessed value of a house in Westfield is, eight hundred, eight hundred thousand, eight hundred dollars. Um, so if you look, um, you know, at, what, what this one point nine eight percent increase means, um, it means five dollars and fifty cents per month. For the average Westfield resident.
And then one, yeah, thank you, Linda. And the one last thing I forgot to mention, every major aggregate expense category is under two percent. And that was something that the committee wanted to make sure that came in as low as possible. So this is another factor. But yeah, you're right, that the average increase for municipal services by themselves is five dollars and fifty cents a month. At the county and the school board and the library or other pieces of your tax bill, but, um, good news story, I think. And this is just a, uh, pie chart to let everybody know where, where the money is spent, how it's allocated up. So you see, um, you know, statutory required expenses are thirty seven percent of our budget. Those are numbers for the most part that are just given to us. That's our, our Raleigh Valley Sewer Authority costs, pension costs. We'll go into a lot of detail in a minute about what those are. Salary wages, another big part of our budget. I will say though, while it's a big part, you know, anyone that works in corporate industry knows that, salary wages under forty percent of a major operation like we run is still a pretty, uh, successful, uh, operation. Normally salary wages are a much bigger percentage. Um, and then you have other categories like reserve up with the taxes. You see, that's a large piece of the pie there. Five point four million and only the town has to budget for that because we are the tax collector. We're guaranteed, we have to guarantee the taxes to this school and to the county. Whether we collect them or not. So we must by law, budget a number called reserve, lots of the taxes. And that's something that makes up a big portion of our budget. Uh, debt service obviously was down this year, but again, a decent part, portion and operating expenses. All the departments operating budgets, again, only eleven percent, but this is really, the title of the slide says twelve percent of our budget is really discretionary. And that's not very much in a forty six million dollar budget. Um, so the committee is always, um, looking for places and a lot of that happens in this piece of pie. And in this piece of pie possibly. And then there's some discretionary costs we have in the deferred charges, the capital improvement fund, which we're able to move up and down as financially flexible, financial flexibility allows us to do so. But again, uh, salary wages and statute require the two big numbers. So some of the detail of that, uh, how it's broken out, we have salary wages here, some detail. So you can see it again, um, important to note, so public safety services represent almost sixty percent of the total salary wage budget and another big portion is public works. Part of the public safety, uh, operation. So, um, they make up the largest portion, um, of our budgets, the largest departments, police, fire and public works. As you would expect, you see the increases here for those departments. Obviously, obviously big numbers, but in the scheme of things, you know, still very manageable percentages. Uh, the health department, of course, as you might expect, uh, very busy department the past year. Uh, we did obviously have some increases there due to staffing needs. So that was expected, yet still very manageable. And then every other department here, um, again, very manageable, low, uh, numbers, in some cases negative numbers. And that's really, uh, for, uh, either savings, like the court's a great example of this. New court administrator started right and as the pandemic began, she came in, new fresh set of eyes, looked at how we do our operations. Looking to manage, uh, different things and we were able to save twenty eight thousand dollars due to some schedule changes, um, how courts are done and other, you know, efficiencies. So that's a great one. Um, so again, just, uh, well managed overall, total package of less than one point six percent in salaries and wages, uh, with five union contracts included in that number. On the statutory required expenses, again, these are numbers that are given to us. Had a very big increases in pension, uh, this year, last year, you, some of you might remember, our pension costs were very low. Pension costs are based upon an actuarial analysis done by the state of New Jersey that every town just has handed a bill. So we do have wide swings sometimes in pension costs, but, uh, even with a big increase in pensions for employees here, police and fire. PFRS is police and fire retirement system. PERS is everybody else, uh, public employee retirement system. Even with large increases here, we were lucky and we were actually fortunate with other things we tried to do, with health insurance being one of them. Good experience and negotiating new rates. So health insurance, a big reduction. Last year, if you might remember, we had a very large increase. RVSA, we're always about insurance authority, while we did have an increase, it's one of our lowest increases in about four years. So which is why we did not increase the sewer fee this year, able to absorb that small increase. But, um, again, see just some of the numbers that just come in, usually increases only. So you can imagine this, like the sewer fee is over four million dollars. Pensions are over for like three or four million dollars. Health insurance, the neighborhood of six million dollars. So these are big pieces of the pie when you, uh, it's a very simple slide, but a lot of money, uh, is represented here. So, the, uh, operating expenses, as we mentioned before, we try to cut everywhere we could. You see a lot of red on this slide, uh, as you might expect. Where there's not red, there's some, obviously, reasons for that. Public Works, um, tops the categories this year. A hundred and three thousand of the one thirty three is the new recycling contract. It's important to note, if you remember last year, we went through this process, uh, we didn't receive any bids. We had to negotiate and actually it did give us an advantage. The negotiation of the recycling contract actually reduced our increase. The bids we did receive initially were much higher than a hundred three thousand dollar increase. So, um, their negotiation helped us. We also had to actually increase salt for snowstorms. We didn't have to do a lot of that the past couple of years. How to do it this year? Uh, had to realize full year cost of recreation facilities maintenance, which extra money we want to put in there. So the cost in DPW were actually increases of over two hundred fifty thousand dollars. But because of cuts, uh, in other areas, we were able to keep it down to a hundred thirty three thousand. Still a big increase, but a hundred and three thousand of that is the recycling increase all by itself. Crossing guards, this one, we, we expected this. Uh, we were able to take a lot of savings last year when schools closed. So we knew that was something we could use last year to our advantage to get us through the year. We knew we'd have to put this number back in to obviously restore the money to have the crossing guard program come back, which of course it has, and it looks like it's ramping up, which is great with school going back. And then the police department, again, uh, we had a lot of cuts in this department. The really increase here is the full cost of the body worn cameras. We had past two years, Chief Madalora's done a great job of getting his money to offset our each year costs. Forfeiture funds were approved by the prosecutor's office. The prosecutor's office also gave us money. This year, we did not have those two luxuries. So it was a sixty seven thousand dollar increase. And yet the increase in the department's only twenty six thousand. So we did cut some, some costs. Uh, other departments, rather simple. The health department, um, it's, it's actually very big reduction, but it's because we had a huge grant last year. And the grant has to be matching appropriation. So the grant comes out for twenty one, the matching appropriation comes out. And yet you saw on the salary slide, we did add money there for staffing. Uh, administration, very, uh, small increase administration makes up all these departments. So very, obviously very small increase there. Planning board, that's a consultant, uh, that we had last year is no longer needed this year. So that's a very big savings. And other things are pretty straightforward. So, uh, public events, that was West Hill three hundred, which was last year. So this year, that's not needed. We're still having public events, but that, that overall budget comes down. So again, we cut everywhere we could. And I think, uh, you know, very manageable budget. So really just, you know, a couple of things to wrap up budget pieces here. There's a lot more slides to come on capital, but we do anticipate, as we mentioned, second half recovery. Hopefully things continue with vaccinations and, uh, caseloads go down. And we hope that we can exceed our anticipated amounts, which will really help us in twenty twenty two. We mentioned a couple of times already, the two point nine million dollars, very helpful for us and maybe gives us confidence to replenish revenues. And three ratables, again, the assessors office working hard with new staff, trying to keep the ratables up, which helps us to produce a lower tax rate for the resident. Higher property values, higher money that comes in throughout the course of the year with projects that'll come online. One of the projects that will come online that will help us will be the, the Bentley, which is the new project around the traffic circle over on, uh, West Hill Avenue, First Street that'll come online fully this year. Again, another ratable that didn't exist before. So those things help us produce a lower tax rate. So anything, before we get to capital, Linda, anything else on this slide?
Um, no, I, I think that's a, a good summary of where we stand. Um, and, um, you know, we, are, you know, frankly, uh, quite, quite happy with how everything turned out in spite of, you know, the situation that, um, the pandemic served up for us. And, um, you know, I just would like to thank again, you know, all of the participants, the departments around the town of Westfield in particular, who, you know, found some more ways to, um, save money so that we could be, you know, conservative in our, um, projections this year.
Good, thank you. And I guess, um, so this is, you know, we were normally wrapping up this presentation. Wanted to add a few slides about capital. On the agenda tonight is also a capital bond ordinance to introduce a capital budget. So we wanted to take a few minutes to go through some capital things. It's very important. It ties to, um, to what we're doing from, from progress perspective and doing, you know, infrastructure work. So tonight's capital budget, uh, capital ordinance that's on the agenda includes, uh, monies for roughly, um, eighteen miles of road paving. That's a combination of money. We're going to put, put up for roads. We're going to do, and also roads, you'll see in a few minutes, uh, about, uh, Lisbon Town Gas. Due to our ordinance requirements is going to do as well. Some of those roads include some drainage improvements. There's some park improvement money in there for things like benches, uh, park repairs, fencing repairs at all various parks. And just another things that might come our way. So we'll have money every year for things we want to do in the parks. Public safety improvements and equipment, things like buying, uh, additional speed boxes, uh, speed, traffic, safety devices. Things we could put up permanently in our areas around town, which have been successful. We want to continue that. And technology enhancements, things, uh, to get some things implemented such as town council chambers upgrades, um, some replacement of, um, other infrastructure in other places in other facilities. So, uh, but the majority of the operator, the, uh, bond order signs for roads. So let's spend a few minutes on that. Again, uh, you know, we do, the, the capital where it's size two point six million dollars, that's being introduced. And that will basically pay for five and a half miles of road we paid by the town. That's roughly about two million dollars of the two. That's roughly about two million dollars of the two point six for roads. Twelve point four is expected to be paid by Elizabeth Town Gas. This goes back to the relationship we we established with Elizabeth Town Gas and utilities in two thousand nineteen. Which turned into a partnership, which then turned into the council adopting ordinance to require this of all utilities, which is great, a lot of towns have that. And was really been fruitful, and we learned a lot from the paving process that we partnered with Elizabeth Town Gas in two thousand nineteen. Not only about the volume of work that can get done, but how they did it. You know, the work they do is of course in grids, it's it's home to home, street to street with the sewer or the uh gas lines be replaced. When they went back and repaid, we realized, wow, when you do things in a grid format, you can be much more efficient. Much quicker in your process, and then you're getting grids of town done at one time, so you don't go back there every year. Or back there every other year and have equipment go over, you know, pavement that was just done the year before, create new seams where they don't exist, so. We learned a lot from them and what they helped to guide us in our future planning. In addition to that, we did a road assessment, which you might remember, we had an independent company come in. Uh performed a road assessment course in two thousand nineteen, I really didn't get to use it that much in two thousand twenty, because we had to take a break for. Financial reasons in two thousand twenty, as many towns did, so. So the the road assessment program, the uh partnership and ordinance requirements with Elizabeth Town Gas and other utilities. And allowed us to kind of look at how we're gonna do roads going forward, and really have a much different way of strategically planning roads. Which really uh has brought us where we are today, since we had to take a break last year. Due to financial concern, we weren't sure where we're gonna be, we're back to where we normally would be in our capital program. So again, road assessment report uh plus um the the uh road ordinance. Uh for requirements for utility companies helps us strategically manage now and strategically plan out. Road paving not just for one year at a time, but for multiple years. And now we're seeing the results of that, utility companies are coming to us saying, oh, we're required to do this, but you know, can we do our infrastructure project, so. It's actually made them come to us, come to the table even sooner. And allows us to plan even better, so we do expect uh that we will, of course, after tonight's meeting. Post the two thousand twenty one roads on our website, as we always do, that's ones that town will be doing. And the ones Elizabeth Town Gas are expected to do for the work they either are doing or have already finished. In addition to that, for the first time, because of what we've been doing the past year, which we had a little time to do it. We're also gonna publish the roads we expect to pave in twenty two and twenty three. And anything that Elizabeth Town Gas or any utility company has told us that they plan on doing in twenty two and twenty three. While it's a snapshot in time at this point, it will populate over time as we as we go forward in future years. This is the first time we're able to do that, because we we work with them, we have a road assessment program now based upon the scoring of roads. And um that's really helping us to be very strategic about what we do, and you'll see in a in a next slide or two, I'm gonna ask the town engineer, say a few words about. With the work he's done um in planning this and really getting us the most cost effective. Cost efficient program uh for not only the town, for the money we're gonna spend. But for the residents and the disruption we caused only one time, so. Let me go to the next slide, there's some wrappings here, well, before I get to that, let me just go through here quickly and tell you about the history of road paving. And basically, again, you see in the out years nineteen, twenty and twenty one, twenty being a year. Like two thousand twelve was a year where it was recession year, twenty was a year we took a break because uh we were, had some financial uncertainty. We were, we had a few roads done, but weather that storm, but you see in nineteen twenty one. Due to the requirements of the ordinance, due to the work we're doing, twenty and seventeen mile, almost eighteen miles of road done. Over the course of a three year period, it's unheard of. You know, the town doesn't have the resources to do that every year, and so for, and remember, we only have a hundred miles of road. So really, in the last four years particularly, we've almost paved forty six miles of road. And a lot of that now, almost half, more than half of that is done by utility companies at their expense. And we are on pace now, assuming utility companies still come to us and we continue our process. To pay five or five and a half miles of road a year, we could have every road in the town paved in the next five and six years. Again, nothing, nothing happens and so forth, but that's unprecedented, um you know, anyone who's been. In municipal government knows how difficult it is to prioritize and manage debt service and and so on, and all those things every year. But we are in a great partnership now with these utilities based upon our road ordinance and based upon the coordination with the town engineer's office and getting this stuff done. It's really unprecedented, so again, kudos to the engineering office and the town council, beginning is that ability to work on this and. And be able to have a very robust program, so again, just I I. Being doing this for so long, I I really, it's shocking to me, when you see the roads that can get done, when you have uh these kind of things in place, so. Let me ask the town engineer, say a few words about um the strategic resurfacing planning, and this is something that I I just want to give him a lot of credit for, he's. Done a great job, and uh I'll let Chris talk about why this is a beneficial process for us, so go ahead, Chris.
Thank you, Jim, uh as Jim had said, the uh twenty nineteen program with the gas company really shed a lot of light. On uh operational um paving in town. What, with the twenty nineteen assessment as well, um we looked at the worst first scenario. Let's take the lowest rated road and just work our way uh up to the highest rated. When you put that on a map, you kind of saw some inconsistencies. Again, compared to how the gas company uh did their grid paving or cluster paving. So you see in this example, uh we have the, you know, this area up in the north side. In the worst first scenario, we're gonna be in this neighborhood in twenty twenty two, twenty three, twenty four, twenty five. So we're gonna be there for four separate years, small sections of road. You know, affecting the neighborhoods uh numerous times. What we decided in looking at those kind of anomalies and with the experience with the gas company is looking at this grid approach. Where we are now, you know, going into an area and just spending the time with the equipment. To complete the entire, what we're calling the grid. Again, it decreases mobilization costs, uh it increases efficiencies and quality of work. As Jim was saying, with the joints and hot asphalt, um and equipment going over freshly paved roads from a year or two prior. And again, reducing the impact on uh the neighborhood. You know, a one time impact as opposed to a four time impact in the worst first scenario. Next slide, Jim?
Yeah, so this, that was a scenario on the uh, you know, example one, we have another example, just to give it a different side of town too. Okay, Chris?
Right, and again, similar uh, you know, to the north side. You you see on the left, we're in an area, uh you know, a neighborhood or grid over um in this case twenty two, twenty three and twenty five. Again, that, the efficiencies uh of having the the milling and paving equipment in one area. That's when we determined it's best to use that approach. You see the grid approach, again, we're in that area completing the entire grid uh in the one given year. Again, efficiencies, uh quality of work, uh neighborhood impact. Again, it it did take a lot, I mean, I I had really, this was the first capital budget where we had the assessment uh to use. I delved deep into it, just trying to come up with all these different scenarios and and with our experience and. Uh I believe if the council approves, that this program is really gonna be uh successful and moving forward.
One thing to add about this is that, you know, the ra- rating assessment, you know, every every grow, every road got a, what they call a P C I score, a payment condition index score. And so um, you know, the way we've worked this in the public works committee and the finance committee both worked on this with us, and they've seen this before, so. Our goal is, we want to, part of the goal is to get roads paved, of course, but also increase our overall payment condition index in the entire town. And so the goal here is that uh over a six year window, and it could speed up because of other work being done. Basically, any road that's rated sixty or less, maybe even maybe more sixty one or less, will be paved. In the next six years or sooner. We focus on a three year window, because we know that's something we can, you know, have pretty good certainty on. But the the point of that is, by moving things around to the grid approach. All the roads that we're gonna get done in that period, it has moved around in different years, some gets moved up, some get moved back a year, but are all done in a grid. Are all done to disrupt the neighborhood once, and then you can actually look ahead and see that, you know, for three years that eclipse this year, twenty two and twenty three, where you are. And each year will add a year to that, so you can kind of see, but if all goes well, we are on pace to. By twenty twenty six or before, and I think the answer is gonna be before, because utility companies are still coming here. Wanting to do work, and they'll be responsible to pave some of those roads. And um we'll be able to have every road that's rated under sixty or even more than sixty paved. Uh and again, as we mentioned, maybe all the roads, uh all hundred miles, forty six and change, were already been done the past four years. Paved in some way by some, by somebody, us where utilities in the next four to six years as well, so. Pretty significant um opportunity for the town and for the residents to have this benefit. We hear, everyone hears a lot about my road hasn't been paved in twenty years and twenty five years. The 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 partnership with Elizabeth Town Gas, I just really want to thank them publicly, it really taught us a lot about the grid approach. And they've been great, you know, partners with us, um as we went through or forward in this, even though now it's a requirement. They've still been a partner with us, and uh New Jersey American Water, the same thing, so. I think it's pretty significant, and I know that we're excited to get started on it, and they've already contacted us this week. When can they start paving, so the quicker we get the ADA compliant ramps in, the quicker they can pave, so that's good.
Real quick, uh for roads that have like like Midvale Terrace, for example. One of the worst roads in town had, I think, under twenty P C I. Is that on the, you know, the three year plan, so. We have to wait for that to be done as a grid before, you know, residents could get that street paved.
I remember Chris, what what rating that was, but um the grid approach does have some roads that basically wait a year or two to get done. So there's a grid, so we have the most efficient operation, I don't know if he's specific to that, so it'd be real, Mark, we can get that for you.
But Jim, I think it's worth to point out, uh if I remember. Basically, every road that is rated very poor or poor, should the two lowest, you know, sort of tiers in our P C I. You know, rating system, all get paved in the next three years, so we were very attentive to that. But I think these color coded charts are the reason why we can't do worst to first, which was really the starting off point. But it's just, it's disruptive and inefficient to pave that way. So, you know, we we do want residents to realize, we looked at it, you know, we use the P C I scores to build this plan. But the grid approach is much more efficient and allows us to pave more roads for less money. But with a goal of paving every road that's in sort of uh in those lower two tiers within the next three years. And in most cases, those roads are getting paved in the first two years. So um I don't know about Midville Terrace, but I think that was the philosophy we used. Uh and I think it's 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 the goal is to use our tax dollars as wisely as possible and pave as many roads as possible.
Yeah, that's the point, David, it's set on the next three year plan, so that's why I brought it up. Thank you.
Yeah, and David, you mentioned inefficient um and disruptive. You know, the grid approach al- also allows us, you know, to um bring down the costs of paving. Because it's more, you know, it's um and protect the roads too. So that you don't have big, you know, heavy equipment going back over newly paved roads. Which, if you look at the worst first approach, that's what you would have to do.
Okay, well, again, I think just want to thank you, Chris, for doing that, it's uh, it's uh, it's a good plan, I just. Continue on and wrap up a few last slides here, so um we talked about the road, obviously roads, we continue the robust play paving program, we also have. Uh other work that's going on in town that is uh separate from our capital budget, but uh still work going on, so. New traffic lights in Lambert's Mill and Rowway, West Broad and Scotch Plains are in process with the county. We do have a train station bar restaurant R P that is likely to be awarded uh very shortly. And we're getting started on renovations to that uh facility there, which is exciting, more to come on that. The user friendly budget, uh sorry, user friendly, user friendly website is uh still in uh process, but we looked at, we'll launch that in the second quarter, which is exciting as well. A lot of work being done there by all the departments. And uh three, or sorry, six new E V charging stations and three town lots are actually being installed as we speak. Probably a few weeks away from those being uh installed and turned on. The Edison School Athletic Complex Master Plan moving forward with the Board of Education, more to come on that very shortly. By the school and Board of Education or by the Board of Education in the town, uh great concept plan there for future athletic complex. And of course, very shortly, uh the land use element circulation plan is to be finalized. In the next few months uh to then begin and give us even more guidance on some of the redevelopment projects that are in the queue. As we go forward to get a lot of guidance on the uh how those should be designed and so forth, so. A lot of work going on on various things in addition to the capital budget, and we just talked about road paving, which is exciting even in the in the face of the pandemic. And uh so just summary, uh on the budget, of course, we went through the capital piece, but. You know, we're in very good financial health, um despite the COVID impacts, uh we went through that tonight. Again, we're getting the two point nine million dollars, which is a really nice uh addition to uh what we normally would generate, we hope uh will be used in. In uh future years, which is great. And again, I know as the mayor said as many times too, that again, and looking at these revenues, and it's come to light very, very vividly in the past two years. Because of COVID, uh our dependence upon these things that are so subject to. Things like a pandemic or other things um are so uh, you know, hard to rely upon, so we're looking to, you know, slowly uh, you know. Go away from those things and look at bigger uh things like smart growth, planning, pilots, uh commercial properties, those type of things, which take time to develop, but. Those could be much more steady revenues for us in the future, and um again, we're looking forward to a very good. End of twenty twenty one here to get some excesses in revenues. And of course, uh successful twenty two and beyond, they put us in a position to really continue and add more things as we go forward, so. Uh I don't know, Mayor, or Linda, have any else to add before we go to uh Q and A?
I I think that's a great wrap up, Jim, I I would only, you know, amplify the the point about, you know, the good news at the end of the presentation. You know, all the things that we're gonna continue to progress um in this year, despite the fact that we really had to tighten our belt on it. On um, you know, on budgets and costs and things like that, so. We're, you know, we're we're very, very committed to um, you know, achieving the long term, you know. Capital plans and to continue um making investments in the town of Westfield. So.
Mayor, you're on mute.
I said, I'll only reiterate what I had said in the conference session, is I've been in lots of conversations with mayors, both in Union County around the state. And uh many of them would love to be in our in our financial shoes, and so. It's an incredibly strong financial position to be in, considering the pandemic and the toll it's taken on many municipalities. So again, I just want to thank all of you for doing really a incredible job to get us to this point. Which is, you know, incredibly exciting for things that are gonna come in the subsequent years, because we're gonna be well positioned to capitalize on them, so, nice job.
Okay, so let me, I'm gonna stop sharing the screen so I can see who's, if anyone wants to uh be heard or have any questions on the on the budgets. If you want to be heard on the budget, we're uh have a question, feel free to raise your hand virtually, see if we can answer your question, uh we've opened the floor now. Feel free to raise your hand virtually. Not seen anybody yet, a few seconds here. Anyone like to be, question on the budget here, we just went through the presentation? It was such a good presentation, Linda, nobody wants to ask questions?
I guess we answered all the questions, Jim.
All right, well, we 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 saw the public portion coming up, so we'll close this portion for the budget. And I guess, Mayor, unless the council has any other comments, we can move on to the next uh, next session meeting.
All right, um so may I have a motion to approve the minutes from the conference meeting and regular meeting of March ninth, twenty twenty one? Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Yes.
opposed? This motion is carried, Mrs. Rowley, do we have any petitions or communications?
Oh, Mary, we do.
Okay, now it's time for open discussion by citizens, please virtually raise your hand to make your comment on any subject on which we have jurisdiction. Be sure to state your name and address for the record.
You want to be heard, feel free to raise your hand, I can call upon you. Anyone like to be heard? One more time, anyone like to be heard? Comments, the mayor and council? Okay, Mayor? Looks like.
All right.
Somebody wants to be heard tonight?
All right, hearing none, I guess we wore them out. I I closed this portion of the meeting and moved to bills and claims, counsel and have good.
Thank you, Mayor, I'd like to move bills and claims the amount of two hundred and sixty six thousand five hundred and eighty dollars and fifty five cents.
May I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Opposed? This motion is carried. Next on the agenda is report to standing committees. Speaker of the Finance Policy Committee, Councilman Havegood.
Thank you again, Mayor. I have twelve items that I'd like to move. The first, and I'd like to move the first six as a package. The first, a resolution authorizing the CFO to draw warrant to refund street opening cash bond. The second, a resolution authorizing an award of contract for the pool concession. The third, a resolution authorizing the payment for body worn cameras. The fourth, a resolution to defer local district school tax. The fifth, a resolution to utilize the three-year average method in computing certain revenues in 2021 swim pool utility budget. And the sixth, a resolution certifying the compliance with the United States Equal Employment Opportunity Commission's guidance.
May I have a second?
Second. Councilman Havegood, I do have a question. If you could just explain a bit more about number four, deferring the local district school tax a bit. In between the conference session and this meeting, I actually had a conversation with a resident who wanted to know a little bit more about that. So if you could just expand on that.
Okay, I, I will start and then I might need to get a little help from Jim, but my understanding is that this is a standard resolution that we have to do at this time of the year because the school budget and our town budget end at different times of the year. And we collect the taxes for the school district. And so there's some, you know, work that we have to do through resolution to recognize, you know, the fact that we have to defer certain things and pay them in their school year.
Right.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Opposed? This, this motion has carried.
And next, I'd like to move a resolution to adopt a temporary capital budget.
May I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Please call the roll. Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, Mayor, it, it might, it might be good just to remind everyone that we're adopting a temporary capital budget because we're trying to get out in front of the capital works that we want to do ahead of actually approving the budget. So this just enables us to get going on roadwork primarily.
And that's a great thing.
Yes.
So please call the roll.
Councilwoman Havegood?
Yes.
Councilman Parmally?
Yes.
Councilman LaGrippo?
Yes.
Councilman Katz?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mackey?
Yes.
Councilman Contract?
Yes.
Councilman Dardia?
Yes.
Councilman Boys?
Yes.
Mayor Brindle?
Yes, this motion has carried.
And then I'd like to move a resolution canceling a portion of the COVID-19 special emergency appropriation.
May I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Councilwoman Havegood?
Yes.
Councilman Parmally?
Yes.
Councilman LaGrippo?
Yes.
Councilman Katz?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mackey?
Yes.
Councilman Contract?
Yes.
Councilman Dardia?
Yes.
Councilman Boys?
Yes.
Mayor Brindle?
Yes, this motion is carried.
And then I'd like to move General Ordinance number 2210 on first reading, an ordinance for calendar year 2021 to establish a cap bank.
May I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Councilwoman Havegood?
Yes.
Councilman Parmally?
Yes.
Councilman LaGrippo?
Yes.
Councilman Katz?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mackey?
Yes.
Councilman Contract?
Yes.
Councilman Dardia?
Yes.
Councilman Boys?
Yes.
Mayor Brindle?
Yes, this motion is carried.
And then I'd like to move a resolution to introduce and approve the 2021 municipal budget.
May I have a second?
Second.
Almost. Any discussion?
Mayor Brindle be voting to vote, move the budget forward. But as expressed in the conference session, my concern is this is the largest tax increase in seven years. And we're taking the surplus below six million to roughly 5.8 million. So I just want to note the record on that.
Got it. Councilor LaGrippo, when did you begin your term as first councilman?
Ten years ago, July.
So you were here back in 2012, thirteen and fourteen, when the tax rate was significantly higher, I, I suppose. And, 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 right. And I assume you supported those budgets or not?
Yes, I did. But we were at a trend where we were doing well after the financial crisis and building up the surplus. And yourself, Councilwoman Havegood assured me the surplus would never go below nine, nine point five million. Obviously, that, that happened. So.
No, I, that's fine. And I just wanted to go on the record that you supported rate, tax rates that were significantly higher than the one I introduced these when surpluses were significantly lower.
Well, as you said, before the pandemic last year, you know, you made fun of a rainy day fund. Obviously, we couldn't use that money at this point to, like, you.
Well, we did, we did use it and used it very appropriately, but it's fine. I'm not, I don't mean to get in the back of your voice. I just wanted to go on the record and make those points as well. So thank you for your duly noted.
And could you go on the record saying you wouldn't load a surplus below 9.5 million? I mean, it's documented.
I
It's documented.
Councilman, there's no guarantees about anything. And I certainly would never have said that. What I did say is that I thought it was a good target to be somewhere in the nine and a half to ten million dollar range at the end of the year. So looking at, you know, what we have as a remainder, after we made some investments from the surplus to help with this year's budget and to keep tax rates as low as we could. We, you know, we're at 5.8. We have 1.45 million dollars coming in this year in stimulus. We have 1.45 million dollars coming in stimulus next year. And then, as we saw from the slide earlier this evening, we naturally regenerate surplus and we will definitely do it this year because we had to underestimate some revenues because of losses or because of, you know, reduced receipts from 2020. And we can't anticipate more than we received in any prior year. So I'm, I, there's no way that I could ever make a statement that we're going to, you know, achieve any particular numbers. But I, I do think that at the end of this year, we'll get back in the targeted range and that's the goal.
Right. And I just, the budget's a snapshot in time. And at this point in time, the trend is not what we anticipated, anticipated to be before, even before COVID.
But actually, Councilwoman LaGrippo, that's not, oh, sorry, Linda.
No, it was just, I was going to say the same thing, David, to feel free to jump in. It's not.
Oh, I mean, I, I just think Councilman LaGrippo, we, we have said over and over again that when we came into office, a $14 million surplus was too high. And Linda said it earlier.
We, we
Sir, 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 don't interrupt.
Councilman LaGrippo, Councilon Contract had the floor, please. So please direct your comments to me before he let him finish, please.
So, so we said, we said very clearly, $14 million was too high. And that we planned to bring it down. And we brought it down primarily by purchasing equipment and, and only doing a half a percent tax increase in 2018 and zero percent in 2019. That I did, I should remind the public, leads to a 1.1% average tax increase over the last four years, which is forty some odd percent below the prior four years, which I think was 2%. So again, we strategically use surplus to, to keep taxes low and invest in equipment. So the, the apples-to-apples comparison on surplus was 14 million to the end of last year, 9.6 million. So please don't say 14 million to 6 million because you know that's not accurate.
No, 5.8 million.
Sir, sir, it's misleading. And, and we don't
That's the truth.
Public.
I'm sorry, Councilman LaGrippo, Councilman Contract is still speaking.
Yeah. So I don't think it's, we, we shouldn't mislead the public. So the surplus was 14 million at the beginning of, of January 2018.
Councilman LaGrippo, please.
And it ended at nine point, it ended at 9.6 million. So if we want to talk about where it's going to be at the end of this year, to Linda's point, we can't predict that. But with certainty, but we do know that we're going to start at 5.8. There's government money company coming, one point, you know, whatever, five million. The town naturally regenerates. If you look at the average, it's two million or more. We'll back, we'll end up back in that nine to 10 million range, highly likely. So let's just get the facts out there so the public can understand it and let's not mislead them. I'm done.
So.
I, I just like to say, you said it yourself, David, 5.8 million. So that's all I have to say.
Well, I, I think this is a good discussion. I think there's a fundamental difference in philosophy that we believe that there shouldn't be excess cash in the bank and that could be delivered to taxpayers either in terms of services or in a lower tax rate. And it's clear, Councilwoman LaGrippo, and I will say, in the last four years, the average surplus balance of this administration has been significantly higher than the average surplus balance of previous administrations. And the average tax rate is lower. So if I was a taxpayer, resident taxpayer and looking at the record, I'd be looking at what administration has the higher surplus balance and the lower tax rate, and that would be this one. And, and I think it's something that we're all incredibly proud of. So but if you believe that we need to put more money at the bank, earning almost zero percent interest, instead of putting it to work on behalf of taxpayers or putting more money in their pocket, that's a legitimate policy conversation that we can have.
Right.
So, so with that, I.
I'll only say, I would have preferred to do something with the county's doing this in the second year in a row. Not doing a tax increase. So that's my point. We could have done more with a rainy day fund instead of having a lower budget. So again, it's philosophy. I do agree with that.
It is. And I think that's, and I think those are the policy conversations we need to have. And the only comment, and then we'll end on this, as I'll make, is that two years ago, when we were at zero percent tax because we wanted to make sure and mitigate any potential consequences of tax revaluations, the county was not. So I think you have to look at any year in terms of make decisions based upon the circumstances of that period in time. So, and, and that's where we are. And again, I think we're incredibly proud of this. And I think we have legitimate and solid policy conversations to have. And I think that this administration can stand on our record very proudly of our fiscal and financial due diligence to the community. So, so with that, can you please call the roll?
Councilwoman Havegood?
Yes.
Councilman Parmally?
Yes.
Councilman LaGrippo?
Yes, I'm moving the budget forward.
Councilman Katz?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mackey?
Yes.
Councilman Contract?
Yes.
Councilman Dardia?
Yes.
Councilman Boys?
Yes.
Mayor Brindle?
Yes, this motion is carried.
I'd also like to move a resolution to introduce and approve the 2021 special improvement district budget.
May, may I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Mayor, I just want to add one thing to this. Just, we didn't mention it in the budget presentation. This is a separate budget, but I think it's important for the public to know, and especially the, the property owners in the SID, that this is a flat budget. The DWC has some revenues that had opportunity to anticipate. So the tax rate here for the SID is flat year-over-year, as it has been for quite a while. So kudos to DWC and Bob Jiggin, our new director.
And kudos for also the many grants that they received. I don't know if Dawn has anything to add. You're good, Dawn. Okay, so may, I, I, may I have a second? Did I do that already? Oh.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Councilwoman Havegood?
Yes.
Councilman Parmally?
Yes.
Councilman LaGrippo?
Yes.
Councilman Katz?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mackey?
Yes.
Councilman Contract?
Yes.
Councilman Dardia?
Yes.
Councilman Boys?
Yes.
Mayor Brindle?
Yes, this motion is carried.
And lastly, I'd like to move special ordinance number 2221 on first reading, a bond ordinance to authorize the making of various public improvements and the acquisition of new additional or replacement equipment and machinery, new communication and signal systems, equipment, and new information technology equipment in, by, and for the town of Westfield and the county of Union, state of New Jersey, to appropriate the sum of $2,650,000 to pay the cost thereof to make a down payment to authorize the first issuance of bonds to finance such appropriation and to provide for the issuance of bond anticipation notes in anticipation of the issuance of such bonds.
May I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Councilwoman Havegood?
Yes.
Councilman Parmally?
Yes.
Councilman LaGrippo?
Yes.
Councilman Katz?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mackey?
Yes.
Councilman Contract?
Yes.
Councilman Dardia?
Yes.
Councilman Boys?
Yes.
Mayor Brindle?
Yes, this motion is carried. Next is the Code Review and Town Property Committee. Councilman Parmally?
I have two resolutions that I'd like to move as a package. First, the first one is a resolution to approve a peddler's license. And the second is a resolution to approve outdoor seating as per executive order number 150 and authorizing the town clerk to issue licenses for same.
May I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Yes.
Hi.
Opposed? This motion is carried.
Next, I'd like to move general ordinance number 2211 on first reading and ordinance rescinding certain provisions of the town code for the town of Westfield. And I would just say that this is rescinding the fact that having an overdue library book was actually a, could be a municipal offense here in Westfield. It could be brought to municipal court jail for an overdue library book.
May I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, Mayor, I did ask for clarification. Mark and I spoke about this through the week in the review. So I'm in agreement with waiving the penalties, but I was asked for clarification, as Mr. Jordan with, about the ordinance in the library, this to do with waiving library fees. But I was asking, like, what's the, what's the recommendation as far as if we waive the fees? What's, what will people do to bring back books or museum passes or what's the incentive?
Well, I'm not, I, I don't know, Mark. I, I mean, I only know what I read. I don't know, Tom. Does anybody have any comments?
I think maybe, Jim, do you want to address that?
Yeah.
Yes. Those planners. Yes, I believe the, the library board has opted to use the services of a material recovery firm that will be reaching out to individuals who have overdue books and items and essentially using a much more gentler approach to get them to return those items. As opposed to imposition of fines and fees.
And, you know, I just add, for the purposes of the, the, the rescission of these, these provisions, that those provisions had nothing to do with the library fines themselves. That's up to the library board itself. And we don't, a player, the town council doesn't play a role in that. But this is just, it actually made it, in addition to the library fine, it made it a municipal offense. And that just didn't seem consistent with the, the goals of the, of the library or the American Library Association.
Is that a volunteer service or we, do we pay for that or for the service to track people down to bring their books back?
Is there a library in questions?
Yeah, I, I believe that, that is, I believe we do pay for this service, but I believe also the, if you will, the return on investment for that is like seven to one in the town's favor.
I also, from what I've read about libraries, and this is something that's happening around the country, and charging late fees is very old school. And it actually, people were racking up so big, it prevented people from using the library or doing books because it felt very punitive in terms of things like that. So it's kind of like when Blockbuster started eliminating late fees and, and their business. So, um, it's kind of like when Blockbuster started eliminating late fees and, and their business went up. It's the same, same mentality about libraries. So the notion of charging late fees is very, uh, uh, yesterday. And I, and what Councilman Boys has said, said that they're using as a solution is definitely, um, you get more people using the library. That's really what they're for. And I think it's more in line with what their mission is. And it's consistent with what's happening around the country. So, but again, it's not our purview. We, you know, we just, it's, it's, it's the library's decision and, and what, and I, and they're, have the responsibility to determine what makes financial sense for them. So.
Thank you. Thanks, Jim.
Okay, can, uh, please call the roll.
Councilwoman Hapgood?
Yes.
Councilman Parmally?
Yes.
Councilman LaGrippo?
Yes.
Councilman Katz?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mackey?
Yes.
Councilman Contract?
Yes.
Councilman Dardia?
Yes.
Councilman Boys?
Yes.
Mayor Brindle?
Yes, this motion is carried.
And last, I'd like to move General Ordinance number 2212 on first reading, an ordinance requiring the licensing and registration of landscapers within the town of Westfield and making certain amendments to the conservation center guidelines, conservation center regulations.
May I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Councilwoman Hapgood?
Yes.
Councilman Parmally?
Yes.
Councilman LaGrippo?
Yes.
Councilman Katz?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mackey?
Yes.
Councilman Contract?
Yes.
Councilman Dardia?
Yes.
Councilman Boys?
Yes.
Mayor Brindle?
Yes, this motion is cur- carried. And last is the Public Works Committee. Councilman Contract?
Uh, thanks, Mayor. I'd like to move a resolution to award a contract for the construction and installation of ADA compliant curb ramps and drainage infrastructure.
May I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
I.
Oppose? This motion has carried. Any other, any other reports before I motion to adjourn? Yeah?
I just wanted to add one thing at the end here. This, again, it's, you know, introducing a budget is always an accomplishment every year, no matter what kind of budget year it is. But I want to say this was a unique year. Even last year, we were able to have our normal budget process. We met everybody in person before the pandemic hit, it was almost finished and we had to make some changes. But this year was unlike any other. We did everything via Zoom. Um, I want to thank the Finance Committee. I want to thank the department heads. It was a very unique year to put together a $46 million budget, but, um, everyone really did a great job and, uh, and did the sharing the screen and seeing things. It wasn't the same as being in person because a lot of that is missed in that process. But, uh, I just want to thank the Finance Committee and then the council as a whole, and the department heads really were doing a great job under difficult circumstances. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Jim, and we saved a few trees.
Yeah, we, we saved.
Great job.
Thank you. Great job to you too, Jim.
Thanks.
So may I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in, all in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Oppose? Okay, this meeting is carried, motion is carried and this meeting is adjourned. Thank you and good night, everybody. Congrats.
Nice.
Good job. Bye-bye.
Thanks so much.